Welcome to the Monday, March 6, 2023 Winchester Select Board Meeting. I'm Rich Mucci, Chair of the Select Board. With me tonight is Vice Chair Anthea Brady and John Fallon, and we have Michael Beckort calling in via phone. Mariano could not be with us tonight, so it'll just be the four of us. We will begin, we're gonna begin right away, because I know, Mike, you're here for a limited time, right?
Yes, sorry about that, Rich.
Yeah, that's okay. So, we're gonna go right to Business Item Number One to start with the Field Management Committee. We have one position and two applicants that have applied, Jason Capodano and Jeff Russo. I see Jason is here. I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion, so I'm gonna leave the room, and I'm going to let Anthea run this portion of the meeting, and just let me know when you're done.
Great.
Thanks.
Do we also have Jeff?
I don't know, Jeff is not here today?
Yes, he's not here this evening, and hopefully he'll be here next week.
So can we, do we need to wait until next Monday to do this?
We can, I mean Jason's here, you can interview Jason.
Okay, sure.
And then wait for Jeff, I guess. Okay?
Okay, come on up. Yep, come on up. Welcome back. We saw you last week. How are you doing?
It's a weekly appearance.
It's a lot of fun. So, thank you for applying for this position for Field Management, and if you could, we have your application, but if you could give us just a brief overview about why you're interested in the role and what you would bring to that?
Definitely. My name's Jason Capodano. I've been a resident in town my whole life. I haven't gone through high school, probably every single sports program you could ever imagine in this community. I think I've played or have participated in watching a game on one field or another in this town at different times. Currently, I am the President of Winchester, Pop Warner, and Chair. Right now, we're just a Chair Program. I also am the Vice President of Winchester Youth Baseball Softball, running the softball side of the program, as well as the varsity softball coach. So, over the years, my past history includes coaching soccer throughout here, coaching baseball, coaching softball, et cetera, at different ages, different points. So, I get the comfort of being on or in or playing on these fields in town over the years. And so, part of this, one of the reasons why the Field Committee interests me so much is, over the last three or four years, I've got to actually interact frequently with them, with a handful of different projects, improving some of the town fields across, which included Ginfield, and now a second project on Ginfield, as well as some projects that happened on Nutell Field on the baseball side. And that process and that collaboration that they have built and have now really instituted with not just the Field Management Committee, but also working with the DPW, working with Select Board, Town Manager, et cetera, Meg White, is a very successful process to keep everyone in the loop, because a lot of times what happens in the past is the collaboration's not there, and it's been more a lot of solo projects that have been getting on, where the left doesn't always know what the right does. And I think this group has brought a lot of that together, which is something that I'm very interested in, and very interested in seeing the success of all these fields throughout this, throughout the whole time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, John or Mike on the phone?
I don't, I just wanna thank you, and your write-up was excellent, and for your commitment to the town. Really admirable.
Appreciate it.
Mike, do you have any questions?
No, just wanted to thank Jason as well, and just to say I can't think of anybody better for the Field Management Committee than Jason Capodano, who's out on the fields, working with kids, improving the fields, coaching, sometimes calling balls and strikes behind the plate. He's just out there and been committed, and as he mentioned, seeing the, how the town works and sticking with it and getting things done. So, thanks, Jason. It's good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you as well, Jason, for applying and for being interested in this role, and I think, you know, the Fields Committee, as you mentioned, is really cross-coordinated across a lot of boards, which is important for being successful there. So, then I think what we will do is we'll interview Jeff next week, and then we'll make an appointment at that point.
I've known Jeff my whole life, and he's a great person. So, either way, I think it's a win-win.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Go get Rich back.
Let's go back up to the top of the agenda, Accepting of Donations.
Move that we accept a donation of $552.69 from Quinn Shoffner for the Recreation Department to the Recreation Donation Account, which is leftover from Quinn's Borgerd Beach Eagle Scout Cleanup Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Move that we accept a grant of $19,950 for the Massachusetts Housing Partnership to Winchester for the MBTA Community's Direct Technical Assistance Program.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you all for those donations, especially Quinn. You know, that was his Eagle Scout project down there. I know he worked hard on that, so always great to see our youth contributing to our town, and we appreciate accept the donation of your leftover funds as well. Appreciate that. Next up, we'll have our Town Managers report.
Thank you. Not too much to report since last week. Just a few reminders, really. The Spring '23 Town Meeting Warrant closes this Friday, March 10th, and the first night of town meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 24th. Our town election is scheduled for Saturday, March 18th, at the Winchester High School Gymnasium, and the deadline to apply for vote by mail is March 13th. And there's a lot more information on voting on the town's website or from the Town Clerk's office. And just briefly, not a lot of construction going on these days. We have a few projects out to bid, the Lake Street Bridge Project, which we have Scott Russo from Weston Sampson here this evening to update us on. Winter Pond Water Quality Improvement Project is out to bid, Harper School Improvements, and then the South Reservoir Dam Aeration Project, which the board funded from ARPA funds. So, those will be some projects we'll have coming up this spring. And then I just wanted to mention, again, a few of the events that the Winchester Coalition for Aid for Communities is hosting. There's a Wednesday, March 22nd, there's an event with the author of The Emotional Lives of Teenagers at Brightlock Farm. There's a viewing of Chasing Childhood on March 15th at the Public Library, and there's a, they've been running a very successful mental health first aid program, so they've added two more dates on April 5th and 12th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM here at Town Hall, and you can register online by April 3rd for those events. Thank you.
All great community events. Thanks, Beth. Any questions for Beth on her report? All right, hearing none. We'll keep moving. Public comment? If there's anyone here for public comment, we recognize you at this point. You have three minutes to state your comment. Anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll keep moving along. We have one license to consider tonight, and it's the approval of an entertainment license for Lucia's Restaurant. I know Phil's here from Lucia's. Why don't you come on up, Phil Fratelli?
Hello, everyone?
How are you?
How are you?
Good. So, it looks like there is a request for an entertainment license. You've had entertainment license in the past at Lucia's, I think?
Yes.
Okay, it's lapsed at this point, so you're seeing...
It seems like it's lapsed. It doesn't require us to renew it every year for the televisions, unlike in other municipalities, so I guess it just says lapsed. But in the past, with them live music, we've had people walking around playing such instruments as the accordion, the violin, saxophone, all kinds of stuff over the course of the last 35 years. So, we'd like to renew it going forward.
All right, and you've got a couple of events?
Yes, we have a couple of events partnering with a resident of Winchester who runs a, like a musical act booking company. So, we're gonna be doing some fundraisers. We have two scheduled events, including one on the Friday, to raise money for the Ambrose PTO.
Okay. And I've seen some emails back and forth. I think there's some paperwork that just needs to get finalized with staff. So, I don't know, Beth, if you have any information on that?
Yeah, so there's, I think, as you said, there's some paperwork that needs to be finalized in terms of an updated seating plan, and also we require sign off by our Fire Chief and Building Inspector.
I'm just, I'm just curious as to the, we've done events before, we've never been asked by, from anybody for a seating plan, like where the tables are gonna be, it seems...
Yeah, I think it's to show the capacity of the space.
We've demonstrated the capacity in our engineered drawings. I mean, the numbers are pretty clear that we can have, what we can have by the code. I don't understand what the need is for further.
So, I think the idea, at least looking at some of the seating charts in the past, that you actually show the actual seats around the tables. I don't know, I don't know if your most recent submittal today from an architect has those seats. So, if you can just add seats to that, I think it would go a long way in just being able for them to confirm those numbers, from what I understand.
But is not the designation based on square footage? I mean, we could have as much, up to the limit or less, like for instance, on the second, on the top floor, it's far less than what we're allowed to have. I mean, I just don't understand what is necessitating us giving a floor plan for a particular event.
So, the staff that handles this for the town is telling, advising this board that we need to have a seating chart that shows a seating plan, and she showed a couple of examples today. So, you know, that's about as much information that I have. So, I think we're inclined to, or at least I am inclined to, you know, conditionally approve the license tonight.
Okay.
As long as you can get, you know, a seating chart to staff, and then they can get the Building Commissioner and Fire Chief to sign off on it. Is that my understanding, am I stating that correctly?
Correct.
So, I think that's, I think those two people need to sign off on it, and in order to do that, they need to see a seating plan, is what I'm being told.
Okay.
So, and I know, and I appreciate you submitting all the paperwork you have, because I think I've seen a couple of emails back and forth. If you can just take what you submitted tonight and add seats around those tables.
Okay.
It will show, they'll be able to, you know, confirm what you're, what you say on page one of your list, which states the square footage and the, and the seats available. So, I can, as I sit here today, I can't say if it's based on square footage or if it's based on seats. What I'm being asked to do is ask you to provide that, so that they can confirm it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I guess, we'll give you a seating plan. It just seems like there's a miscommunication as to what it's based on, because my understanding of the zoning code is it's based on square footage, and seats are kind of arbitrary.
So, yeah, I mean, just to reiterate what Rich said, the person in our office who kind of leads the charge on this, is the person that we kind of have to, you know...
Sure, but so...
Make sure that she's here to answer the, answer the questions.
But if we're relying on the zoning code, that's what we're gonna rely on, right? So, if we show seats up until the limit that we're allowed to show, that's what you guys are gonna check off on, or is it a different standard now?
We will rely on whatever the standard is that we've relied on for every other entertainment license the town has issued. So, we're not, we're not looking to do anything different for you than any one's...
Yeah, as long as we're gonna follow the zoning code, and we can stick to the limits that we're allowed under the code. I mean, that's all we are asking for. So, we'll give you a plan that's...
That's my understanding. I mean, again, if you can just show seats on the actual plan...
It just seems like we're getting a message that somebody's worried that because it's downstairs, or because of this and that, but like I said, we showed you the code.
I think the concern is that, you know, the entertainment space is in the lower level of Lucia's, and they wanna make sure there's proper egress and that there's no overcrowding. So, I think for any new license such as this, my understanding is that we require a seating plan that shows that. And I was showing examples of that today, you know, for some of the restaurants that have applied in the past, and some that are applying in the future for different permitting. So, so my, my, my goal is, you know, for you to have your event Friday. So, I think I recommend to my colleagues that we conditionally approve it based on those conditions, that you update the seating plan, and also that it's signed off on, it's approved, everything is approved, that needs to be approved by the Building Inspector and Fire Chief.
Okay.
So, anyone have other thoughts?
I just have a question. If Phil's plan showed four seats less, for example, does that mean that he's forfeiting the opportunity to have those four seats? Let's say it's four seats less than what court allows, and we approve that plan. Maybe your plan's gonna maximize it, Phil. I don't know, but that would just be my question. Like, if I was Phil, I'd be like, well, what happens if I show a plan that has fewer seats than what I'm entitled to under the code? Is this somehow gonna supersede the code, because that's what I turned in for a plan?
No, I mean, he could always come back for an amended license.
Well, I mean, that's really our frustration, is we just don't know what standard is being applied, because there was a standard that was on our liquor license. Now, you're saying it's based on the zoning code, but there was no plans on file due to the longevity of the restaurant. This is a 40-year-old restaurant. Plans didn't exist on PDF, like, there was just nobody had a scanned copy. So, when we opened and got the original license, there was obviously all those check offs, and we have the egresses and the lights and everything else, and we have inspection every year. The question is, like, what's the standard? And now, it seems like there's some particular concerns based on the fact that we're downstairs. But as long as we're following the code, and we'll show seating below what we're allowed to have as a low capacity, I mean, I just wanna make sure that that's what people are gonna follow, and that we're not getting a special circumstance because of something else.
You know, I don't think there's any special circumstance here. It's, we're gonna give you what you're allowed to get, as long as the Fire Chief and the Building Inspector are satisfied that, and the Building Inspector's zoning and the Fire Chief's safety. So, as long as they sign off on it.
Okay.
That's what you get.
All right.
That's what I'm being told to ask you to do.
Okay.
Is that, any questions from any Board members?
That was my question answered.
All right, so if there's any more questions, we'll make a motion.
Move that we conditionally approve the entertainment license for Lucia's Restaurant, which includes providing an updated seating chart and approval by the Building Inspector and the Fire Chief.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Nathan here for the MBTA Project Update. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Good to see you too, bye.
Stationed up yet?
How are you? Pardon me?
Stationed done, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Open and shut.
Buy your tickets.
Just before we get started, I wanted to, the project superintendent from Barletta, who was assigned to the project, recently passed away earlier this year, Scott Miles.
Who he did?
So, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge him. I thought he was, he was an excellent person working on the project. He did a fantastic job working with the community in his few months here. So, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge him and his service to the project.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree. He was always very responsive, and I wasn't aware of that. Started to hear that.
Yes, yeah, it's big loss.
Yeah. All right. Well, on that sad note, let you give an update.
Sure. Sure, thank you. Yeah, just a project overview. We, we know what we're, for anybody who doesn't know, we're building a full station reconstruction, two full high-level side platforms, three elevators, lighting, signage, wayfinding tracks, basically a full station reconstruction. Um basically a full station reconstruction at the existing Winchester Center Station. Project costs about fifty million dollars. I'll, I'll start with some recent construction activity since I was here last. Maybe just a note also, um we are monitoring. Uh so I got a note about uh rodent activity and uh part of the, the scope of Barletta's work is to. Uh manage pest, we call it pest control, and uh so we are doing that. We're monitoring uh twenty-four bait stations, we call them. Uh throughout the perimeter of the project, basically, uh from Thompson Alley, Lareway Road. That area, and uh so, you know, just to, an indication, a report, uh latest one I could get was February twenty-seventh. Showed light bait consumption throughout the, the stations, the twenty-four uh stations. Um and this, the bait that we're using is, is not harmful. I think in the news recently, there was uh, you know, you know, other. Yeah, yeah, the wrong.
So, no, it says uh light bait, whatever it is. So do they just go in there and snack and leave, or do you actually catch them?
Yeah, so this, this stuff is, is a, is a, like, they, they, they eat it and then they go away.
Exfire?
Yeah, 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 that's what happens. And it's, it's in stations, it's, it's, it's not the, the chemical that I think has been in the news recently about, you know, that killed a, an eagle or something like that. But it's, it's different. It's, it's safe that way. Uh we, we got this approved by the, actually Winchester Health Board wanted to look at it, so they, they looked at it and. A year ago, and so uh it's, it's safe that way. And um I think there was a, a con- a complaint, uh a few months ago when the cold weather set in. I haven't heard much, but uh we're, we're monitoring them. Just in case, you know, so if anything comes up, just let us know, you know, we can uh add, add some more stations if we need to. Uh since it, since December, we've uh, we're continuing with micropile work. Uh we, I've reached a point where there's a, a few left to do. Uh the quill rotary, there's some left, uh there's one, a couple left behind uh. At the Tom, we call it Thompson Alley, back there um at the end near Waterfield, there's some left to do. One up by the quill rotary at the Thompson Alley, and so that work will be continuing once uh there's a few. Uh underground work that has to be done first, so that's, will be picking up in the spring again. Uh we've uh, you see in the middle picture there, again, last December, since we last met, uh ramp and elevator foundation work going on in Avrejonah. The demolition there on the right of the, there was an existing baggage elevator. That's uh, you see the uh dust control, I got the guy spraying water there, so that's, that's taken down now.
It's mostly demo done?
Demo is mostly done, the heavy demo, yeah. There's some hand demo left to do, but yeah, the heavy demo is done, yep. Uh so on the left there, this is uh at the Waterfield Lot looking towards Lareway Road. There's a elevator pit there and some grade beams for stairs, uh for stairs there. And then there's some utility work by Eversource uh on Lareway Road there in the middle that's ongoing. The, it's quite extensive, uh that duct bank work. The only part that's left now is, is some on Waterfield that's on pause right now, I think, until there's. A moratorium over with. And then on the right there, you see the Avrejonah Lot, uh kind of this uh grade beams, foundation work, elevator pit. Um we're looking for some steel to happen coming up in the spring. Shop drawings are getting approved now. Uh and then up, up the platform level, uh we're putting in some preliminary foundation work there. Uh concrete placement of the grade beams there in uh in February, and then some work, uh Eversource work, the electrical duct bank work in the. In the quill rotary. We've had great cooperation with the police, by the way. They've been tremendously helpful, very appreciative of them. Upcoming construction, uh platform level would be some selective demolition ongoing. Uh this is uh some minor stuff that. Kind of need to get in order to prep the, the following work that needs to happen up there. Avrejonah Waterfield Sections, uh again, well, you'll see some ramps and platforms start to go in uh in the spring. And we call, we call it the headhouse, that southern area at the Avrejonah and Waterfield Areas where the two elevators are. Steel erection will start, the elevator shafts will be first, and uh you'll see some other, uh the ramp follow-on work in Avrejonah after that. In the headhouse area, and uh likewise i- in, in Lareway Section with the wall construction. Uh we're starting to put back in some of that salvaged stone that we uh uh saved from the, from the former station. And we're reusing it, repurposing it now. It's going, it's starting to start to go back in soon. Uh, you know, stations obviously closed, what, what, what do, uh what does the ridership do? They make their way to Wedgemere or uh the next closest bus stop. To the north, so available. And uh so I'll be coming back to the select board in June. Also, at that time, we'll be in a public meeting, and uh. You know, we can, you can contact us with the construction hotline or the project email address or the website there.
Questions for Nathan?
Yes.
Is, is the project on schedule?
It's on schedule.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good, awesome.
Yeah.
So it's spring twenty-four?
Spring twenty-four.
It's recorded. We'll ask you in June, too.
Yep.
That's great to hear. It's on schedule. I know a lot of work's going on. Uh it's been a little bit of a favorable winter, uh so it seems work's continuing. Um I think when work picks up in the spring with the good weather, just obviously be mindful of the parking. I think your team's done a good job of that in recent months. Uh which is great, um you know, it's great for our businesses that you're complying with the parking. Uh uh plan that we put in place for the project, so um thank you for that. Um and just as it, more workers get there in the spring as, as work ramps up, if we can continue to do that, I think it would go a long way for our businesses as well.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we'll keep an eye out for that.
Any other questions?
Just appreciate that the, the, the rodent bait is safe for birds. I know it's. Sort of a notable loss um for folks that who drive along the Mystic Parkway and see the bald eagles that were there.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously after um that bald eagle was found uh in Arlington, um you know, we, we did get a couple of emails of concern, and one, you know, was. About the bait traps that you have, so uh it's good to hear that that, um you know, that our board of health, our health department has reviewed that. Has approved of it, and it's, it's not the same chemicals that were found, uh and that, so it's all good news. Because I think that was one of the questions that we had tonight, so glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else? Alright, thank you, Nathan.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Next up, Lake Street Bridge, come on up. How are you?
Good evening, I'm Scott Russo of Westman Sampson, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you. So just to give a quick update on, on the Lake Street Bridge Replacement Project, I know it's been a little bit. But I just thought I'd just go through and just give you a quick scope of what's about to happen. Um you know, they're gonna remove, it's full bridge replacement, um they'll remove the existing corrugated steel plate arch and some of the. Concrete spandrel walls, partial abutment demolition, um you know, temporary relocation of the gas mains while the work is going on. And then followed by permanent relocation on the downstream end. Um the new bridge will be supported by micropile foundations, so some deep foundation work will be going on with pile caps. And then the new bridge will be a precast concrete rigid frame arch, so a three-sided arch.
Same width?
Um it'll actually be longer, it'll be twenty-six feet long, the.
Okay.
The existing one is about fifteen feet.
Okay.
You know, it also included some of the partial roadway reconstruction on either side, uh slope stabilization on all four corners. Uh we will also be installing two new gate valves on the existing water main for, uh to help out with the water department. And there'll also be some new trees, loam and seed, that'll be going on, uh you know, based on conversations with the conservation commission, so. Um the roadway will be closed, uh there'll be traffic and pedestrian detours during construction. Uh we have a pedestrian bridge as a, as a bid alternate right now. We're hopeful, we're hopeful like that'll come in where we want it. So that'll just shorten the pedestrian detour uh during the construction. Uh so, project is currently out to bid, uh we have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow morning uh down at the site at the DPW. Uh bid opening has been moved, well, it was moved for just once, uh to March sixteenth uh at ten AM. Uh one thing I did wanna note, which was not on here, is permit-wise, we are still waiting to get the MWRA eight-M permit, unfortunately. Um so we've been, Meg has been helping, helping out, trying to get an update on that. Uh that is the only one outstanding. The project, if you did not know, was mainly delayed because of the chapter ninety-one um waterway license permit, which. Has been the demise of many projects lately, so. So we're hopeful we'll get response by MWRA, and bid opening will, will happen as planned. So as far as estimate construction schedule, we're looking to award the contract uh pretty quickly after, afterwards, on March twenty-seventh or so. Contract duration, we're estimating at two hundred sixty calendar days, as we, we've provided the contractor, so that would be completed by December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh road closure and detours approximately three to four months. Uh closure to start around June nineteenth, uh coincide with the end of school uh for the summer. So.
Is it a total road closure or is it one lane, I can't remember?
It's a total road closure, so get them in and out.
Yeah, we evaluated the two options years ago at this point.
Yeah.
Um and it was significantly more expensive to do the one-lane open, so the decision was made at the time to do the full closure.
Where are the detours? Have we decided that yet?
Yeah, so as far as traffic goes, they'll, they'll go up Main Street to Canal Street to Middlesex Street. Um so that, that'll be the main traffic detour. Um as far as pedestrian detour, so.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, I guess I should rephrase my question. I get the detour.
Yeah.
Plan, but like realistically, I mean, you know, to the high school, how are we expecting people or how are we gonna advise parents? To, to go to the high school so that we don't have gridlock?
Right.
Uh 'cause we've got kids going to the middle school, and now those people are all gonna have to come from that side of town and go to the high school, so are we gonna formulate a plan?
Yeah, so I think part of the reason we wanted to close it right after school, as opposed to closing it before school got out, is that. We wanna give people the summer to get used to the fact that the road is closed and kind of feel their way around, and then we'll work with the. School and the police department before school goes back into session um in September to, you know, blast out some information to parents about.
Yeah, I mean, 'cause no one's realistically gonna go this way, so, I mean, maybe if you come across it and you're not from town, but how are we gonna? I mean, to me, that's my, my biggest concern with this project, 'cause that is a thorough scare in, in the morning.
Yeah, it's gonna be a challenge for sure.
So, um and if you go the other way, you're getting into the middle school traffic or the elementary school traffic just leaving, so. I mean, really something that the team really has to put their heads together and figure out, you know, the best route for everybody.
So there will be pedestrian access?
We think.
Yes.
We're hopeful, yeah.
So potentially.
We have two options. One is, one is a better option than the other.
The two options is they'll go around, they'll go up the trail, um and it, through the, the crossway up um by the DPW yard. And out on the other side and go, they can either go all the way down or we can. Um we can divert them up into Main Street. Uh that, it's not the best option. I mean, we're, we're looking if we can get that pedestrian bridge and that falls in line within the budget, within our budget, then. The pedestrian bridge will be located right here and it'll be a shorter detour. I think it's actually, it's gonna be located a little bit closer, so. Really partially going through, you know, the, the parking lot, but we're gonna try and keep it tight, so.
Yeah, I mean, at all costs, we need to do something like this, only because I know, to me, this is probably our, our most disruptive project we're gonna do in the next couple of years.
Right.
Uh and one of the concerns for me is we have the Palmer um housing complex up there, and a lot of our elderly. Residents walk to stop a job, they walk downtown, and that's kind of their lifeline, so if we're making these people walk all the way around. I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna cut them off, so we really need to figure out how to make that happen. I, I mean, I get it's a budget item, but.
Yeah.
It's a huge concern. I know it's been at the forefront for years now.
Yeah.
Uh as this project has kind of waited, but. Yeah, school traffic and that are gonna be the two biggest concerns.
Well, and if there is a, an easy pedestrian crossing there, that should, you know, it may, might just be figuring out where there's a, an opportunity for. Drop-off turnaround for school traffic, 'cause that's not far.
Yeah, this is a good point.
Versus driving all the way around.
Yep.
I don't know how that also will impact um any school buses, and we'll have um sort of differing things with lynch traffic.
Yeah, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with, um Scott wasn't there, but it was just a staff meeting with the schools and police and fire, just to kind of talk through. The logistics of this, um so the school is aware of it with the bus traffic.
I mean, you've got Church Street, and then you've got Pond Street, but Pond Street, I would imagine up by the lake, when it turns from the lake, it's gonna be under construction. With Eversource at the same time. It's like a perfect storm. Uh so, I mean, we're, I can't stress enough how we need to really think this through. And there may be only a couple of options, but um, you know, I don't know. Maybe schools can start ten minutes later. Give us a break.
Yeah, it'll be.
I mean, we'll know a lot more once we get the contractor on board and have a schedule, and I mean, we're all fingers crossed, hoping that things won't be accelerated, but I don't. Try to be realistic here.
I was just gonna echo what Beth said. I mean, hopefully with the contractor on board, they may be looking to just get in and get out quicker, and they may have some better. You know, they may have some ideas as to what they wanna do. Um so, and we're, we're definitely open if they wanna do more pre, precast elements, you know, as far as the pile caps goes, we're, we're all for it. We're just, um the micropiles, we just can't get around just 'cause of the soil conditions there. Uh and, you know, if everything goes on track, you know, we're trending where the precast is, you know, based on the lead time with the precast materials. Like, it should be ready by July, mid-July if they get right on it, so, um you know, it's gonna.
You say that with a straight face?
It's gonna be tight.
Precast has been the, it's been a tough go of precast materials.
It has, it has, I've heard.
Two years.
So, but that's based on what we've last heard, so.
Can I ask, just, I just also thinking of timing, uh I know um Spontance Street, that, when that was done, there was a ton of rain. Um which impacted timeline. Is this, will this be less tied to the weather, or are we?
Say no, I mean, if the river's high, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge to work there.
Yeah, it'll be a challenge. I mean, again, we're keeping the existing abutments, but they're pretty low, uh so it all just depends on. The rainstorm events that we get.
Will this bridge sit higher up?
No, no, it's in a, it's in a floodway, so we have to match um the bottom core, so everything's kind of matching. We did go wider, which doesn't affect the hydraulics of it, um but it, it doesn't affect um. Posit- completely positively, but it doesn't affect it negatively, so um the goal is to, you know, no rise in the floodway, so. And then, you know, our latest cost estimate that we just did in March is around one point seven million. You know, we, we updated it based on mass dots weighted average unit bid prices that are available uh from the past three to six months. Um and so this seems to be, I mean, it's, it's slowly risen, as Beth is well aware.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we went back to the fall time meeting to get money. We had a total budget of two point one, we have almost two million left. We had um some, we've completed the, um we had some store relining to do, uh was required by MWRA, so we've completed that work. So, yeah, we're fingers crossed, but with, so this is the construction cost, and we have the construction admin services, and then we'll have a little contingency left, so.
Yeah, this was not what we considered the total project cost.
So will, um you know, the bid opening is March sixteenth, so we'll know a lot more at that point.
Does that estimate include the, the pedestrian bid, bridge?
Um that one does, yes.
So what's the probability of us getting the remaining permit in order to keep the construction, construction schedule?
You mean the eight-M permits?
Yes.
I think it, well, last we had discussed with um the MWRA, it sounded like it would, should be pretty um straight. I think, well, last we had discussed with the MWRA, it sounded like it should be pretty straightforward. Now that we have, the sewer was relined. That was their biggest concern, that, you know, the vibrations from the construction. But now it's relined, it's strengthened, and we actually went down, I think, towards past Linden Street. So unless they have, well, unless they have any other requirements, such as any type of monitoring, or they want to have someone on site when there's certain activities of work going on, that's what we really want to get from them so we can just get that in the, as an addendum. So.
Thank you.
It's not uncommon to be in this position with eight M permits.
Yes, I should say, this is, this does, this seems to be commonplace right now. That's all I had, so.
Any other questions, anybody? All right. So will you be back at some, was this the last update?
Well, I mean, I, I just thought Scott should come in because it's been so many years that we've been talking about this, but it took so many years in permitting that a lot of the decisions were made a while ago. Just so just to refresh everybody's memory that this project is actually going to finally happen, and we're not just going to talk about it for a few more years. I don't know, well, you know, hopefully we have positive bid results on the sixteenth. And we're certainly happy to come back and talk more about the, you know, traffic controls that we expect to come in once it gets closer to the start of construction.
Yeah, so Beth, before, I know it probably has to be in the RFP, but you know how they did the, was it the seven bridges in seven days, whatever it was in ninety-three, or twenty-five bridges in twenty-five days? I can't remember what it was. It, if there's, if let's say it comes in at a million five, okay, I'm living in Candyland. And we want to have an incentive for them to compress the schedule. Do A, can they work longer? Like, you know, instead of seven to four, can they work seven to seven? I don't know what the ordinances are about that. Can they work Saturday? And will we pay a premium to get it done a month sooner? And does it have to be in the RFP as a bid alternative? You can't negotiate that later, or can you negotiate later?
So usually when we accelerate things, it's because, for example, like we had really bad weather at Swan Street, and we were trying to not accelerate it, but catch up, right, so things fall behind. You know, we'll have to talk to the contractor and get them on board and see if they're willing to do anything to try to accelerate. It's in everybody's best interest to get it in out.
It's a choke point in town, so if we can compress that, that would be good.
So it's possible, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're not, if you are talking about doing an incentive, you know, a certain fee, if you get done in a certain amount, that definitely would need to be in the RFP.
No, no, no.
But work hours and things like that. We can, we can put that, we can make it a.
No, I was just, I was just asking a question more.
Yeah, no, I think it's just, I think it's already with the contractor, once we get them on board and get their schedule. And, you know, like I said, it's in everybody's best interest to, they want to get in and out as soon as they can as well.
Yeah.
Great.
We are, I just mentioned, we do have the gas company who has work to do out there, so we are, we do have that to contend with as well.
That's a good point. They're allowed.
What do they need to do?
They're allowed three weeks.
What are they supposed to do?
They, they're going to move the main and temporarily support it, and they'll move it for the temporary and then for the permanent. And they told us it should take three weeks. They need three weeks with the site to themselves, they were saying.
Is that for both, moving it?
The temporary, so we're going to move one to one side with the other one, and then we're going to move both of them at the, once the structure's in place, into the permanent location.
And that, those two projects will take three weeks total?
Three weeks each move is what they said.
So that's six weeks for the gas.
So if we can.
So that's really twelve weeks.
That's, that's another conversation we're going to have with National Grid about accelerating that. We're, we're trying, trying to figure out where that time comes from.
Yeah, it all hinges on, you know, getting the contractor in place where we can get everybody to kind of sit down together and work out the schedule.
So.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, next up is the River Street forty B landscaping proposal.
So the forty B project on River Street, there was a modification to the comprehensive permit that was approved by the zoning board of appeals in the last few months, earlier this year, January thirtieth is the date of the decision. And as part of that, there was some revisions to the landscaping plan that was approved to help to screen some of the neighbors on the Wendell Street side. Some of that landscaping is proposed in a town-owned right-of-way for Wendell Street. And so there was a requirement included in the CBA petition that any landscaping that is to be installed on town-owned property is contingent upon approval and license from the town. If such approval is given, such landscaping shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So basically, we're just here this evening to have the board review that concept. If you are okay with the idea of them installing landscaping within the right-of-way at the end of Wendell Street, which from a staff perspective, I don't have any concerns with, I can ask town council to draft up a license agreement for you all to.
How wide is the right-of-way there? Does it run parallel? I, I read.
So I can give you this plan. This is, this is the cul-de-sac at the end here.
Yep.
And it kind of goes to the property line, so it's, you know, it's twenty feet, so it's probably thirty or so feet wide at the end there, twenty.
And how, and isn't that wide?
This piece right, this piece right here is just the town part of it.
Right, but how wide is that? When you say?
Oh, this whole thing.
Oh, okay. All right, all right, okay. Yeah, okay.
It's a paper, you know, it's a paper cul-de-sac at the end there, cul-de-sac. So it's a very limited scope. There's probably three trees, three large trees, and, you know, some smaller shrubs and bushes that we planted in that area.
I'm good with that. Neighbors want it, and I don't blame them.
Yeah, I mean, the more, the more, the better here, I think, so.
So Beth, is there a reason not to do that? I know you said you have any problem with it, but I just.
I don't think there's any reason not to do it.
Yeah, I, I was driving down. Loring today, and I just ducked down that cul-de-sac, and it is, you know, the River Street now is pretty visible from Loring, and I didn't realize how closely Wendell connected over there. And then they will have maintenance, the River Street property will have maintenance of those trees.
Yeah, I'm sure there'd be, that we can include that in the, in the license agreement, so they'd be warranted, you know, for a year or whatever, to ensure they grow.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I don't know that I need a motion tonight.
Do you need a motion?
I think I'll, I'd wait to have the license agreement for you guys to review, and then you can.
That makes sense, yeah. So consensus to start drafting that license agreement. All right. Washington Swan Street projects?
So we have received notice from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership that they received a request for a determination of project eligibility from Melanson Development Group for the property at the corner of Wash, the property at the corner of Washington Swan Street, so that the town-owned piece that the town has issued the RFP and has executed LDA on. The town has thirty days from the date of the letter, which was February fifteenth, so we have until March sixteenth, I believe, if my calculations were right, unless we want to ask for an extension to submit any comments that we may have to MHP. And town council drafted a letter, which I included in your packet this evening, just as a, as a draft, to see if the board was, I don't have my copy, but you have your copy, to see if, you know, that was kind of in the scope of what the board was interested in submitting. We did have a site walk today at eleven o'clock with MHP and the applicant. There were representatives there from the Affordable Housing Trust and from the Housing Partnership Board. We did have an opportunity to ask questions. There are just a few very minor changes to the project from the time that, from the RFP phase. They've actually increased the number of parking spaces on site to, I think it was from a hundred and six to a hundred and fourteen. And then just a very minor change to the bedroom count. It doesn't change anything in terms of the overall number of units or affordable units. So I think overall, it's, it's in line with the, with the town has previously reviewed. I think you went through a very thorough kind of review process when you reviewed the RFPs with comments from other boards and committees and a public process.
Where are they with the due diligence as far as from the test borians?
They have until mid, mid-ish April, and they've been out there working, because they notify us every time that they go on site. So they've been, they've been out there during their.
Yeah, I mean, I was at the site visit today. It was a positive meeting. I think everyone likes the direction of projects heading. It's positive. So it was a good meeting. You know, this is just the next step. So, you know, developer, you know, the way he was speaking today was, you know, progressing nicely through the due diligence process. So fingers crossed, but I think, you know, it was a positive development today. So this is just the next step, which I was fine with the letter that was included in our packet. I don't know if anyone had any comments or suggestions or changes or questions.
But it was fine?
The only thing I think we might want to add to it is that under the LDA, they're required to maintain the affordable units in perpetuity, which is a step beyond what the MHP requirement is, is typically for thirty years. So I think if it's not already in there, it just makes sense to add that for clarity.
Any questions, further comments? All right. So we need to vote some response, right? There's a substantial form?
Yeah, I think you could vote to authorize the chair to sign a letter in substantially the form or something along those lines.
I move we authorize the chair to sign the letter regarding Washington and Swanton Streets in substantially this form.
Second.
Roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Athia?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, great. Thank you. So our final business item agenda is our Spring Town Meeting warrant article. So warrant closes on the tenth, so Friday. I think the warrant remains unchanged from when we last met last week, but did want to just, as we usually do, have, we have it on our agenda every meeting and see if there were any changes or questions or anything concerning the warrant, but I think we're in good shape. Were there any changes, Beth?
Yeah, the only thing I would mention, and the article numbers are not final, so. But what's listed here is Article twenty-eight, which is related to the Lynch School traffic. The capital planning committee was interested in co-sponsoring that article if the, if the board is agreeable to that.
I mean, I think that would make sense. I think I would ask that we take the lead on maybe the presentation, but certainly, you know, we welcome a co-sponsorship like that. Otherwise directed by any of you?
Sounds good.
All right. So I guess this would be the final call for the warrant. Any changes, any select board members wish to make to the warrant? All right, hearing none. We'll wait for that to be finalized and then take it up for consideration.
Yeah, I think you should vote this evening on the articles that you, typically, we have a vote for the articles that you'll be sponsoring, and then you'll vote the warrant, I think, on March twenty-seventh. That's the final.
So are we voting the individual articles at this point or is it the whole?
As a, as a whole, all of this, the articles that those select board is sponsoring.
I move that we. Approve or sponsor the, the articles as provided in the packet for the Spring Town Meeting, sponsored by a select board.
And it is approved, it's not sponsored.
Oh, it is approved. Okay, I move we approve the articles as posted in the packet for March sixth for Spring Town Meeting.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Athia?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, great. So I think the last item we have on the agenda, if I'm right, is the consent agenda? Any questions on the consent agenda? So the Glenn Doherty race is going to happen next year. I'll have to start training now for it. Probably one race a year. Glad to see that. That's always a fun weekend in town. Is there a motion?
Move we approve the consent agenda as posted for the March, Monday, March sixth agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Athia?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Did I miss anything?
And that's it.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Athia?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, WinCam. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.